...of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:03 PM. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Asking one last time. If there's no public comment, we will move forward to item number four. Approval of minutes from the January 20th, 2014 regular meeting. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Len, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item number five, first selectman's report. There'll be no report tonight as I was out of town the last few days. Item number six, presentation from the Culture and Arts Committee. Ladies, if you could talk into the microphone, just so the, we can hear you on the tape.
Hi, I'm Mary Barbin, Vice President of the Seymour Art Culture Committee. We have a couple of questions to ask you, if you don't mind. We like to order two signs near the train station, entering Seymour Antique District and leaving Seymour. And it'll give more people to know that there's, you know, coming from the train station, people pass by and say, "Oh, there's an antique district here. Why don't we stop and go shopping?" So bring in the business. Because I, I'm the one that noticed it when I go through, you know, to New York. You always see entering Seymour, I mean, New York's different areas, and I never seen one for Seymour. So we were thinking if, if you don't mind, if we purchase one.
No, I would ask that you get in touch with Dee, my office, to make sure she gets you in touch with New Age.
Yeah, that's who we deal with anyway.
Because all the signs match, so there's one common theme for every sign.
Correct.
So, yeah, I don't think that would be a problem at all.
Okay, great. Next is, just want to make sure I don't forget something. I've got work on my mind right now. So, the next one, we're thinking of, if we could put a block, a banner near the train station, about two feet by 10 feet, telling you about the block dance. Would that be possible?
Whereabouts by the train station?
Front of the, of the train station.
I don't see why not.
Okay. And second of all, we were thinking of a sculpture. We have a designer who's trying to design a sculpture for us, something to do with Seymour, a meaning of Seymour. And he was going to give us a couple of designs that he has created, which he has not given us any yet. And we would submit it to you guys, and you could choose which one you like. Would that be a problem?
I don't think it would be a problem to submit it to us. Can't guarantee that we move forward with it.
No, that's fine, as long as you see what we have to offer. And that's it. Is there anything else you would like to let us know?
Anyone? Questions, comments?
Anything that you would like to see?
Plus on where the sculpture would go?
Near the train station.
Same, like?
Everything near the train station, at this point right now.
Would it be something that's heavy, that people could pick up?
No, that's what we're working on. So it'll be mounted down.
How big?
We don't know that yet. We haven't really decided because he hasn't created it yet. He's just doing a couple of sketches. Anything else?
Yeah, good.
I'd just like, do you have a card or something where I can get in touch with you about the bands you bring into town? I have a couple of suggestions for you, if you could follow up.
Sure.
I can get your personal information tomorrow.
Who are you looking at?
Well, just to mix it up a little bit, I see it's like the same bands.
Oh, no, we've been changing it. The only one we really now have, I'll be honest with you, because I'm the one that gets all the bands. This year, we have, we always have flashback, okay? Number one. We are not having them twice this year because we really said enough is enough. We have the same amount of people coming in for flashback as much as the other bands. So we have Gunsmoke coming, and we have a band that does all Beatles. Okay, that's the two newest ones. And we're trying to do two a month. But I would love to have more, more.
Yeah, I was thinking more, just original music, maybe some young bands from.
I did have it, and we did have.
I don't know if you can afford them, that's the thing.
No, we did have one from New York.
Oh, great.
We had two last year that sang their own music.
Yeah.
And you want to know the sad part? They, by an hour, they were packing up their chairs and leaving. It was very discouraging. Seymour's like that. I'm noticing it.
They like, they like cover bands. They don't like the original music.
Yeah, they don't.
That's why I wanted to check.
Yeah, because we had Royals. They were new, another one from New York. There were two brand-new bands that we had.
There's so many great bands out of Brooklyn that we could probably get here.
You know what?
I was going to talk to you about.
Does, give it to me. We hired to offer this year, next year.
Like I said, I'll know if they're affordable. I don't know if they.
Hey, you never know.
You never know.
Listen, I'm a good bargainer.
I'm sure you are.
So don't worry about that.
I'll check that with you and see what we could do to it.
I would love to have it. I would gladly take it.
Bands that are in Brooklyn right now, so.
They'll be perfect. I'm all for it. And I, the whole culture.
Because I love music, that's why.
I do, too.
You do?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Al.
Anything else?
Is there anyone, any other questions for Mary? Anyone? As we can stop Al? Okay, thank you very much. If anyone's ever ridden in the car with Al, you will question his taste in music. Item number seven.
Question, nothing.
Discussion and take possible action on Seymour Fire Department surplus equipment request.
The eighties are still here, Kurt. The eighties are still here.
Thank you all.
What's wrong with the eighties?
Thank you, ladies.
Thirty-five years ago, Karen. It's fine. I love it, too.
Okay, if we recall.
There's new music out there.
On December 11th, we received a letter from our Emergency Management Director, Thomas Amey, requesting the surplus 1979 Dodge Salisbury front-mounted four-wheel-drive pumper. Also, on December 13th, we received a letter from the Board of Fire Commissioners that they had surplus, voted to surplus Engines 10 and 18. We granted the approval to surplus Engine 10. We're waiting on a decision on Engine 18. Some members of the board had some questions with regards to repair costs. Rory passed out tonight an email that came in late last night from Tom Amey to myself. And I'll read the email into the record. It said, "This is to confirm the acquisition of Engine 18. The F-250 quote for bodywork is $4,000. We are actively seeking a second quote on the repairs. And just to clarify, the F-250 is the current 4x4 truck that Emergency Management has. Since acquiring the F-250 four years ago, the following items have been replaced: brakes, both drive shafts, exhaust system, shocks, fuel tank, fuel pump, four-wheel-drive hubs, power steering unit, and a starter. And then in parentheses, the mileage of that vehicle is $37,800. After reviewing maintenance records with the engineers and the retired fire department mechanic, who I'm going to assume is Tommy Jensen, the only cost into this vehicle should be two batteries at this time. We were considering to run the additional vehicle, but we believe the pickup will only hold out until we can perform the necessary changes to the fire department vehicle. We realize the next free municipal vehicle will not be available until four years from now, and that would be the police pickup. Therefore, there are no other options to us without costing large amounts of taxpayer dollars." Okay, so Len, I know you were the primary requester of this information. Does this provide you the information that you were looking for?
Yeah, as I read through this, it looks like pretty straightforward. It's going to be $4,000 repair, at least $4,000 to afford the F-250, and a fire truck looks like two batteries, a couple hundred bucks at most.
If that.
So I'm happy.
Okay.
Appreciate, I appreciate the director getting the information.
Okay, he is, like I said, he is seeking a second quote on the repairs as well. But if any of you have seen that truck or been in that truck recently, I don't think that $4,000 is far-fetched at all, to be quite honest. The body started to rot very bad on the bottom, so. Questions or comments from other members? No? Okay, so we have then two orders of business. Again, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. The first order of business would then be to approve the Board of Fire Commissioners' request to surplus Engine 18. And then, if this board so chooses, and again, as we learned in the ordinances that Rich prepared for our review for us last week, the decision is solely mine, but I'm going to turn that over to the full board. I'd rather the seven of us made the decision together as to what we'd do with that, so. Does that sound, sounds correct? Okay, so with that, then, I will entertain a motion to accept the Board of Fire Commissioners' recommendation to surplus Engine 18. Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Okay, so then the next order of business would be the surplusing of the vehicle to the Office of Emergency Management. So I'll entertain a motion to surplus Engine 18 from the Seymour Fire Department to the Office of Emergency Management.
So moved.
Motion by Karen, second by Len. Is there any discussion?
What will happen to the F-250 for family and community management?
That, I assume we will get a letter from him to surplus that as well. I'm not sure what the value would be, but, and I know in his conversations, he did offer any money received from that truck to go to the fire department. So, but I have to confirm that with him.
That's his recommendation?
I believe, but he had said that in the meeting, but until I see it in writing.
Yep.
Any other comments, thoughts? Nope, okay. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Rory, can you prepare a letter tomorrow to the fire commissioners and to Emergency Management? That they turn the truck over to Emergency Management, please. Okay, item number eight, discussion and take possible action on removal of Inland Wetlands Commission member. Okay, we received a letter on December 29th from Stephen Plotkin, if you all remember, recommending the removal of two members who had missed three or more consecutive regularly-scheduled meetings, that being Kevin Steinis and, excuse me, Dave McAndrew. Dave McAndrew has moved out of Seymour, so he will be removed from the board, or was removed from the board for that reason. Kevin Steinis was sent a letter, which you should all have a copy in your packets. And I'll read the letter into the record. Says, "This letter informs me that on December 29th, 2014, I received a letter from the chairperson of the Inland Wetlands Commission regarding your appointment to that commission. According to that letter, you have missed more than three consecutive meetings of the commission per Section 9.4 of the Seymour Town Charter," which is listed below. I won't read that whole thing. "This letter shall serve as notice that the Board of Selectmen will take action on the chairman's request at their meeting on February 3rd, 2015, unless we receive any notice that you wish to take advantage of the recourse afforded you outlined in the charter section above." And again, that's Section 9.4. "Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you." W. Kirtmiller, First Select. Rory, did we receive anything from Mr. Steinis? We did not. Okay. So Brian, our course of action would be what?
At this point, I don't have a vote at this floor. If you're not requested, you've been given an opportunity to appear and to be heard at a hearing. You cannot take advantage of that, so it's totally before your body right now. So you should take a vote, and look in front of the vote, and there'll be five members before.
Okay. All right, so with that being said, I will entertain a motion to have Kevin Steinis removed from the Inland Wetlands Commission per the recommendation of the chairman of the Inland Wetlands Commission, Stephen Plotkin, per Section 9.4 of the Seymour Town Charter. Motion by Len, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Rory, please send the letter to him. Okay, item number nine, discussion and take possible action on NVCOG GIS data development and GIS website enhancement. Items nine, 10, 11, and 12 all go together, so we'll just kind of go through them in order. Essentially what this is, and you have all the information in your packets through our new COG, the NVCOG. We will be going out for three specific grants, trying to get information with regard to upgrade our GPS, excuse me, our GIS system, I apologize, for the Senior Citizen Property Tax Loan Program feasibility study for the entire corridor, and then for the statewide orthophotography and LiDAR data. And if you're not aware of what those are, orthophotography is the aerial photography that's geometrically corrected. So if you're looking down at something from the air, it widens it out. What this does is it brings it all into scale proper way. And then the LiDAR, that's technology for developing high-resolution maps. So something that we'll be able to use through the COG to better serve the 19 communities that it represents. The GIS upgrade, the funding request was 1.2 million. For the Senior Citizen Property Tax, the funding request was 60,000. And for the orthophotography and the LiDAR data is 1.9 million. There is a resolution of endorsement and authorization, which I will need to sign and send forward to the COG, but before we do that, we must go through the three attached resolutions. So I'll go through those resolutions one at a time. And I'll read those. The first one is the Senior Citizens Property Tax Loan Program Resolution. Everyone have that in front of them. Whereas the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments has decided to make an application to fund a grant for a Senior Citizen Property Tax Loan Program feasibility study, and whereas, as baby boomers hit retirement age, municipalities in the Nogatuck Valley will see a large increase in their elderly populations. The purpose of the study is to investigate the feasibility of implementing a Senior Citizens Property Tax Loan Program through a lending organization such as Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. The program would act as a property tax revolving loan fund for senior citizens. A lender would pay an applicant's property tax to a municipality and place a lien on the property. The lien would be collected by the lender upon sale of the property. After an initial funding period, it is anticipated that the program would be self-sustaining. The goal of the program is to provide tax relief for senior citizens and give them a financial incentive to maintain their homes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Seymour endorses the grant application for the Senior Citizens Property Tax Loan Feasibility Study, and be it further resolved that W. Kirtmiller, First Selectman, is authorized to act on the endorsement by signing all necessary agreements and take all necessary actions related to the proposal to enter into a binding agreement with the Office of Policy and Management according to terms of the RPI grant program. We have a motion to accept the resolution as read. Motion by Nicole, second by Len. Is there any discussion?
I think Karen and I are the only baby boomers on this board.
No comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
And, you know, I'm just, and it's probably just a technicality. I mean, we could possibly benefit from this. Does that mean that we should not vote on this?
Well, this is just a feasibility study.
Okay.
So I don't think there'd be any issue with that. Good question, though. Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Excuse me. Okay, next resolution will be the Nogatuck Valley Regional Geographic Information System Upgrade Resolution. Whereas the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments has decided to pursue a grant for a Nogatuck Valley Regional Information System Upgrade, and whereas, grant would fund the acquisition of high-quality digital orthophotography and LiDAR and production of GIS data and an enhanced online map retrieval service for the Nogatuck Valley region and its municipalities. The proposal includes a digital inventory of existing municipal infrastructure key to effective management of those assets. A comprehensive GIS database would assist data sharing, mapping, and analysis capabilities at the town level, enhancing municipal planning, property assessment, public works and engineering, economic development, emergency management, conservation, other local activities. And whereas, the proposed project will result in the following region-wide GIS data products and services. And you can see the breakdown under GIS and GIS services. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Seymour has endorsed the grant application for the Nogatuck Valley Regional Geographic Information System Upgrade, and be it further resolved that W. Kirtmiller, First Selectman, is authorized to act on the endorsement by signing all necessary agreements and take all necessary actions related to this proposal to enter into a binding agreement with the Office of Policy and Management according to the terms of the RPI grant program. Have a motion to accept the resolution as presented. Motion by Al, second by Len. Is there any discussion?
Yes, real quick, can our, can our website as currently constituted accommodate upgrades of GIS data to integrate together? Do we have that capability?
We have a separate GIS system than this, but they want to merge all 19 together. I don't know the answer to that question. We'd have to ask our provider, unless you know. We are a little ahead of most towns with our GIS mapping, which is certainly a plus. Okay, if there's any other questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. And then the final statewide, statewide, excuse me, orthophotography and LiDAR data resolution. Whereas the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments has decided to pursue a grant for a statewide orthophotography and LiDAR data for the entire state in partnership with all nine RPOs. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town of Seymour has endorsed a grant application for the statewide orthophotography and LiDAR data, and be it further resolved that W. Kirtmiller, First Selectman, is authorized to act on the endorsement by signing all necessary agreements and take all necessary actions related to this proposal to enter into a binding agreement with the Office of Policy and Management according to the terms of the RPI grant program. To have a motion to accept the resolution as presented. Motion by Len, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. And then finally, in your packets, we have the resolution of endorsement and authorization. Going to ask for a motion to allow me to sign the resolution of endorsement and authorization with today's date, accepting, or referring to our acceptance of the three resolutions just presented. Motion by Len, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda, item number 13, we have no executive session. Item number 14, appointments, we have one. Okay, Nicole, Claritstetria, NVCOG alternate. It's an appointment. It's a one-year term. It expires 2/3/2015, actually. No. It would be the first Monday in December.
Of this year?
Yeah. Be with me, one second. Yeah. It's a time thing.
I'm ready. I'm ready. Nope.
December, okay, so the expiration date will be 12/7/2015. Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Len, second by Anne Marie, just under discussion. NVCOG used a proxy process, NVCOG will have formal alternates. So if I'm unable to attend, Nicole will attend in my place and will vote in my place. Okay, no other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes six zero one, and please note Nicole's abstention. Okay, item number 15, tax refunds and abatements. Nicole.
Office of Tax Collector, January 29th, 2015, to the Board of Selectmen from the Tax Collector, the following overpayments of tax payments in total of $9,469.89 need to be approved for refund in accordance with the provisions of Section 12-129 of the Connecticut General Statutes dated the 29th of, day of January 2015, Dana Flack Tax Office.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to accept the Tax Collector's report as presented? Motion by Anne Marie, second by Nicole. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Item number 16 is transfers. We have no transfers before us tonight. Item number 17 is correspondence. We have just a few pieces. We have the check registers. We have a tally through the end of 2014 for the prescription discount card. In 2014, Seymour residents saved $19,992.34. So for the total savings for the 18 months of the program, Seymour residents have saved $35,682. So we should all be proud that we put that in together. And then last is a letter from Selectman Green, who is resigning from the Public Works Board effective immediately due to work commitments. At our next meeting, we will appoint his replacement. Okay, item number 18, public comment. Public comment. Hearing no public comment. We will move on to Selectman's public comments. Karen?
I just have a couple of things. I got the Code Red call yesterday that I thought was very rude, to remind people that taxes are due yesterday despite the fact that the weather was bad and the roads were really bad. I just thought that was a rude thing to do, and I noticed the governor extended the tax deadline. And I thought that probably would have been the right thing to do. I mean, if you're 81 years old and you owe taxes, and you're not comfortable driving on the road despite the threat that there's going to be a penalty if you don't come into town hall today to pay your taxes, I really just thought that was terribly rude.
Well, I want to correct a few things. Number one, the governor did not make his announcement until midday. That's number one. The governor's the only person in the state who can waive that provision. That information had to be provided to residents so that they knew. There was no intention for it to be rude. There was no intention for it to be obnoxious. It was information that residents needed to know. It was a very small segment of the population who waited till the very last day to pay their taxes. Very small segment, so.
I just thought it would have been kind to tell people that they could come in today rather than yesterday.
They couldn't have. When the announcement went out, they could not have. It's not my fault that the governor waited till midday yesterday to make that decision. We had to make our plans and get the information out to the public in a timely fashion. We did not have time to wait for the governor to go give speeches at Yale and do the different things that he did. We had to do what needed to be done for the town of Seymour.
I'm not arguing politics, Kurt. What I'm saying is that.
I'm just, but Karen, I'm telling you.
If you're an elderly person and you get a call like that.
How do you think the elderly person would have felt had the governor not waived the taxes, and they showed up today and we charged them interest? How do you think they would have felt?
I'm not arguing politics, Kurt.
I'm not arguing politics either. I'm arguing facts.
It would have been a kind thing to do.
To do what?
To say to someone, bless you, to say to someone, "Okay, so you procrastinate." We all procrastinate about different things. Fortunately, I'm not, my husband.
Karen, I couldn't waive the tax, I couldn't waive the interest. It's not allowed.
Right.
Yesterday morning at 9 o'clock, I did not have the authority to waive interest.
Under what, the charter?
Under state statute. The governor's the only one who could do that.
Okay.
So I had to wait until the governor made his decision. The governor unfortunately did not do that till midday yesterday.
All right.
So.
All right. Two weeks ago, I asked a question regarding Derby creating, Derby Selectmen Alderman creating a Blight Ordinance Committee of the members of the Board of Aldermen. I asked Rich to call Attorney Tadocio, and Attorney Tadocio has not heard from him yet.
Okay.
So I would like to re-request that we examine that, the creation of a committee of the Board of Selectmen.
I will bring it up to Attorney Petrola on Monday when he gets back.
Thank you. And then the last thing. I subbed last week at the high school in an AP US history class, and I ran, all the high school classrooms have big TVs now, and I ran the videotape of our last Board of Selectmen meeting. And I thought it was very interesting that the students watched it. They literally watched it. When they, well, they finished their, the questions they had to do, but then at the end, they were watching our video. And a young man said to me, "Oh, so there are five members of the Board of Selectmen?" And I said, "No." And I said, no, there are seven. Mr. Green is cut off of the videotape, and I'm cut off of the videotape. And I think for educational purposes, it's important for the kids to understand that there are seven of us, and it's not a partisan thing, me being a Democrat, Len being a Republican. I think the camera, and I spoke with Rory earlier today, I think the camera should be repositioned so that the kids can see all seven of us. And I had somebody say to me, somebody who's 91-year-old mother, watches these videotapes. Whenever I speak, she says, she says to her daughter, who is that? Who's that speaking?
Well, you know the camera's on you right now, directly on you.
Okay, all right.
Because when Rory's here working, when he's here, not taking notes to the few times Leanne's had a miss, he moves the camera to the speaker. So when you speak, it goes to you. When Len speaks, it goes to him.
But since Frank left, I have been, I've not been on many videotapes since Frank left.
Rory, do you not move the camera when people speak?
Yeah, I mean, I tried to, it's very difficult to hold on that, but...
Yeah, we spoke earlier today.
I will explore the cost of moving the camera back to cover that, but we're gonna have a problem with the stanchion that's gonna take out part of the picture. The support beam.
Well, again, you know, speaking as a high school teacher, I think for educational purposes, I mean, I'm not doing this because I wanna be on video because clearly, I mean, the pressure's off now.
More than likely, the alternative would be to place two members in front of me.
I don't see why the camera can't be angled like Frank sat there and videotaped us from the angle.
Well, because we'd have to pay to have everything moved. I think it would be more cost-effective to have a table right in front.
Okay. You're not hearing what I'm saying.
I'm hearing what you're saying, because the cam would absolutely pick you up.
I'm saying for educational purposes.
Right.
I think it's important for people in this town to know that there are seven of us, not five of us.
Understood, so if there's, if there was a table with two or three members directly in front of us, how would they not know how many members there were?
That would look ridiculous.
All right, Rory, could you call the vendor and explore how much it would cost to move the camera, please? And we'll get a price, and then we'll make a decision as a group. But knowing that there is no budget for that, we would need to go to the Board of Finance for a transfer.
Okay.
Anything else, Karen?
That's it.
I'm good, thank you. Nicole?
Couple things. The Christmas presents, lights at the Broad Street Park, are they moving?
Yeah, Mr. Yagvane's been asked to move those. If they're not moved by the end of the week, Public Works will be moving them.
And are there lights too?
The lights should be gone, but I will check.
They were last, I think, as of last night, the lights are still there.
Okay, I'll check.
How about the flags on the bridge, the Christmas flags?
Happy Holidays or Merry Christmas, they're there.
Yeah, the, the winter ones came in late. Public Works just not, has not had a chance to move them.
Well, if you know with the snow, I know it's a little different.
Yeah, and we just haven't prioritized it.
Okay, and then last, or, I know I've asked you this before, but just an update, the spam on the town email?
Um, we are making a, Rob Dwyer has made a recommendation to purchase $18,000 worth of equipment, not just for, for that, but as part of his budget going forward and overall town-wide technology budget, new spam filters part of that, it will be paid for in this year's capital plan. So we expect to have that in place within the next month or two. So.
Thank you.
Well, Al? Nicole? Or, sorry, Anne Marie?
I'll go again if you want.
You set up.
Yeah.
Len?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, thank the board members for appointing me to the Board, Public Works. It's been a pleasure to serve for the last year, unfortunately, due to increasing work and personal commitments, I'm gonna have to take a step back from that. But I did want to urge whomever takes my position on that board from the Board of Selectmen to consider continuing the implementation of the performance measurement system that's in place right now. They have been, over the past, I believe, for the most part of a year, compiling baseline data which can then be used for analysis, comparison, and strategic implementation of changes that might be necessary. So I think it's very critical for whomever it is that takes up the mantle from this board to continue pushing that forward on the Board of Public Works and increasing the implementation itself. So I just wanted to urge my fellow board members, and again, thank you for, for making me your representative for the last year.
Thank you. Just along those lines, Rory is looking for some performance measurement training that he's going to go to. Once he has that, he will spearhead the project out of my office. As a part of what Len is saying, at the next meeting, I'll be introducing you to a new program that we're gonna have. It's Seymour Sweeps, I think is what we're going to call it. This is something that's come out of Len's idea where we're going to, on a quarterly basis, essentially drive every street in Seymour, and we're gonna itemize all the issues with each street, whether it be sidewalks, potholes, garbage, what have you. Now that we have the use of light duty for every public employee, it's something we can use light duty employees to do. They can jump in the car. The first round of, I guess, catalog, cataloging, lost my track about there. Cataloging we've done by myself, Dennis and Tony, we're gonna map off, we're probably gonna start April 1st. We're gonna jump in one of the cars, and the three of us are gonna spend two hours a day. We're gonna drive every road in Seymour, and we're gonna catalog everything. And then every three months thereafter, we'll send an employee out to follow up. So as part of what Len is saying, we'll be able to track now specifically potholes, sidewalks, garbage, things like that, so we'll have a little bit better understanding of what's going on. Rory's also working on setting up through the website a specific link, which we'll just title Seymour Sweeps. Residents can go in and I'll start to actively report things that they see on their own streets. That information will come directly to Rory and myself, so we will track that and then assign it to the appropriate people, track it, and make sure the work is getting done. So we're gonna take our existing interaction through the website and take it one step further than all came out of what Len had brought up earlier on, so we're gonna take that kinda to the next level. So I expect to have everything at our next meeting for that. Also, at our next meeting, we will have an employee issue to deal with. I don't think I can say much more than that at this point, but I had disciplined an employee who in turn grieved it. We denied the grievance, so step two would be to come in front of the Board of Selectmen. At that meeting, I'll present my case, the employee, I guess, will present his case. I have witnesses as to what transpired, I'll bring the witnesses in, and then at that point, I'll ask the six of you to decide if my decision was correct, and if you'd like to uphold it or not, and then we'll just kinda go from there. So, with that, any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, adjourn, second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes seven zero. Mark the meeting closed at 7:42 PM.